Good evening. It's 6 o'clock and I would like to start our town hall meeting for our solar project that we are planning on having at the Judicial Center in King County. And I want to thank the people who are here in person and thank some of our guests. I see we're getting a few people joining us on Zoom, so I want to thank you all for joining us today. My name is Mavis Bates. I am the chairman of the Energy and Environmental Committee, and I'm hoping that we can put a beautiful solar field in King County. I would like to introduce Mayor Burns, Mayor Kevin Burns of Geneva, and he is on the Geneva Environmental History and Greenest Region Compact. So please, go ahead.
Thank you Chairwoman Bates, and good evening everyone, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, those of you on Zoom, of course, my friend Ivy.
Hello.
It's my privilege to be here this evening as both the mayor of Geneva and chairman of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Environment Committee and Energy Subcommittee. This town hall allows us to learn more about the proposed solar array being considered on the King County Judicial Center property. It's worth noting that this proposed solar development is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact, as well as the just-launched Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. The former, the Greenest Region Compact, which was launched in March of 2016, and by design, purposefully, leverages the strength of municipal governments and county governments to build vibrant, sustainable communities across the Chicago region. The foundation of the Greenest Region Compact has 49 high-level goals that have been reached by consensus. Not only are the goals aligned with the important local, regional, national, and global goals, but they also are broadly supported by municipal members of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and allied organizations such as King County. These consensus goals guide municipal action, support mayors and county leaders in their role as environmental stewards, and foster collaboration that has positive impacts on sustainability throughout the region. To date, 136 communities of all sizes and strengths, as well as four counties, have adopted the Greenest Region Compact with the overarching goal of improving quality of life for more than 6 million residents throughout Chicagoland, making the Chicago Greenest Region Compact the largest regional sustainability collaborative in the United States. I'm happy to also share with you that King County was the very first county in the region to adopt the Greenest Region Compact. The Climate Action Plan, a complementary plan for the Chicago region, was unveiled on Tuesday, July 13th, just 21 days ago, and draws its energy, indeed its enthusiasm and momentum from the Greenest Region Compact. Both the Greenest Region Compact and the Climate Action Plan can be found in their entirety on the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus website, which is mayorscaucus.org. As we again learn about and discuss in more detail the solar development being presented, I proudly applaud Madam Chair Bates, her team here at the county, for advancing this project consistent with the GRC and the Climate Action Plan, and I look forward to learning more. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mayor Burns. Can we start sharing our slides now? Your PowerPoint slides? Can we share those, please? So we'll bring up our PowerPoint slides and... Ah, excellent. So welcome once again to our solar town hall meeting. Blair, can you go down a little bit, please?
Mavis, before we get started, I just want to let everybody know that this meeting is recorded, and you'll be able to find a recording of this meeting on our YouTube channel. The name is King County Government Center. A full recording will be on there posted tomorrow, and then the slides of this presentation and the agenda will be posted on our website under the meetings page tomorrow. So if you're looking for that information, it will be available to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ivy. So thank you again for being here, those in our audience and those on our Zoom audience, to learn more about our plans for solar field on the land of the Judicial Center. So down one slide, please, Blair. That's me. I'm King County Board Member for District 4. That's on the west side of Aurora, and I'm the chair of the Energy and Environmental Committee. I'm hoping we can make a big success of this idea for the solar panel. I'll take off my mask to be able to speak better. Okay, next slide, please, Blair. So my goal for my little talk here is to make people aware that King County has had a long history of supporting environmental stewardship and sustainable practices. So this solar panel field here is at our King County Animal Control Solar Installation. So for many years, we've been supporting renewable energy, and we have included renewable energy in our plans for the future of King County. So it occurred to me, because I'm a teacher, that maybe I should talk a little bit about what renewable energy is. So just in case people don't know, renewable energy means we don't have to dig any coal and we don't have to pump any oil out of the ground for renewable energy. All we do is capture the sunshine that comes every day from the sun. We let the sunshine and we gather that energy to make electricity. So whereas coal and oil are not renewable, because they will run out someday, the sun is not going to run out for a very long time, we hope. So for the... So down, please. Next slide, please, Blair. So going back to 2011, we have our written plans for King County. So in 2040, we wrote our energy plan. Well, it was published in 2011. So this is going back 10 years now. And the goal there was to encourage onsite renewable energy for residential buildings and commercial and industrial buildings. So by encouraging renewable energy, we can save money, which is going to be in some of the other slides. You'll find out how much money we can save with this, by reducing our energy costs, and we can help the environment and our people by reducing pollution from fossil fuels and slowing down climate change. And the health of our residents can be greatly improved by reducing this air pollution. A lot of kids go to the emergency room every year because of asthma, and when we cut down on this coal pollution, that can be helped a lot. So next slide, please, Blair. So next, we come to the King County 2040 Plan, published in 2012. And a quote from that is "facilitating and citing of smart grid technology and renewable energy infrastructure and designed to increase energy efficiency and reliability." So when we talk about smart grid technology, that means a grid, an electric grid, electricity grid, that is able to handle electricity from many different distributed sources, not just energy from one big coal or oil power plant, but from many homes, many fields, like we're hoping to put into the Judicial Center. And it's designed to increase energy efficiency and reliability because the energy comes from many different locations. So if there's a big power outage or, you know, a transformer near some big power station gets blown, by having the energy distributed to many different locations, we can make ourselves more sustainable, more resilient, more reliant. So there's a lot of good reasons to do this. So... And it makes us less vulnerable to those power outages, especially because this includes our jail and our sheriff's department. And they, of course, need to be sustainable and resilient to power outages. Next slide, please. So then we come to the King County Operational Sustainability Plan, published in 2013, which is about the purchase or installation of renewable energy for county facility energy use and to remove the dependence on grid-produced electricity and to lower our monthly payments. So again, we're stating our support for renewable energy for all the same reasons, to make it reliable, renewable, and because this dependency on grid-produced electricity can lead to power outages and dangerous downtimes. And we're going to lower our monthly energy costs. I hope you'll be very happy to see the amount of money that we can save through a solar field for King County. Next slide, please, Blair. So this is the King County Green Building Policy, and this was only adopted within the last few months. So this is adopted in 2021 to incorporate green building and design principles into the building and renovation processes of county-owned buildings to ensure buildings are environmentally responsible, economical to operate, and healthy places to work, and that they significantly reduce or eliminate the negative impact of buildings on the environment and occupants. Buildings create a lot of pollution and a lot of climate change right now. So we want all of our buildings should be safe and renewable and green. Environmentally responsible means taking care of our environment and our people. So thank you for being here tonight. I hope you will be excited to see a field of solar panels on King County soil, helping to save money for our taxpayers and save our environment at the same time. So thank you for being here, and we are so excited to have our citizens here, our residents here, our neighbors here, and we want to hear from all of you and hear your concerns and see what we can do to make everybody excited and happy about this plan. So next, I will give you Ivy Clea. Would you introduce yourself, please, Ivy?
Sure. Thank you, Mavis. My name is Ivy Clea. I'm King County's Resource Management Coordinator. Before I get started with my presentation today, I want to thank everyone for being here, those who are attending in person and online. If anyone has any questions who are attending online, please put them in the chat, and we will address those later on in the meeting. And then if you are here in person, we have question cards on the podium up there. So please feel free to fill those out if you have any questions during the presentation. Blair, can you go to the next slide, please? So today, I'm going to be presenting the solar power purchase agreement opportunity for King County's Judicial Center. Next slide, please.
Ivy, may I just add something? None of these things that we're about to show you have been signed or sealed. There's nothing here that is carved in stone. It's all... I'm sorry, those chairs are blocking your view, but this is a proposal. It's still a proposal, and we want everybody in King County to love this plan. So we're working on that right now. Okay.
Thanks, Mavis. So I'm just going to give some background on where this project originated. This project idea was first discussed at King County's Energy and Environment Committee in April, and then our board members were interested in pursuing more information to find out if this project would be feasible for the county. So we sent out a request for proposal in May of this year just to get some more information from solar vendors, and we received eight informal bid proposals. And based on those eight, GNRE Solar was ranked the highest in our evaluations. And today, we have the CEO of GRNE Solar, Eric Peterman, online with us today. So you'll be able to hear from him and hear a little bit more about their company. One of our big, exciting findings of the request for a proposal that was submitted by GRNE Solar was the potential for savings in our transmission and service fees. So currently, there is a Clean Energy Bill that may or may not be passed by the governor's office. It's still in Legislative Committee, and we don't know whether or not it's going to be passed, but in the event that it is passed, there will be a new source of funding that will allow us to pursue this project with no cost to the county. So in a way, it acts almost as grant funding. And the project term would be a 25-year power purchase agreement. The definition of a power purchase agreement, for anybody who's unfamiliar with that, it is a contract where one entity generates electricity and the other purchases the electricity. And then the Judicial Center and the jail meters are where this project will potentially be located. Next slide, please. So here we have an image of the proposed solar site. So we have the solar project site with the solar panels outlined in white, and the Judicial Center is also noted on there. You can also see the roads. We have Peck going up and down, and then Burcher Road, side to side. So I know that a concern has been, why did we choose this particular site for the proposed solar project? We wanted to utilize non-developable land on the King County Judicial Center campus. So we were working with our master plan committee. So they have a master plan for the rest of the campus to develop additions to current buildings, to parking lots, and to other areas on the campus. So we wanted to work with them to make sure that we weren't interfering with any of their future plans. And we were also working with the solar vendors. We actually went out and did an assessment of other sites on the Judicial Center campus to see what would be an ideal setting. So we also looked at the roof of the multipurpose building, which was just built. It's brand-new, and we also looked at the field that is to the northeast of that building. And then we looked at this site, and it ended up that this site made the most sense according to the solar vendors and also to the master plan. So that's just some background on where this project site came from. Next slide, please. So some landscaping changes that were proposed in the plan that we received. There is currently a berm on this project site, and that's at 790 feet currently. And according to the proposal, that berm would have to be reduced by 15 to 20 feet in order to mount the solar panels on the ground. So when we heard this, we wanted to make sure that we were within the guidelines of the landscaping plan for this area. So we did some research and digging, and we found a landscaping plan that was approved by the Criminal Justice Project Steering Committee. And that committee originally approved a landscaping plan that had a minimum height of the berm at 768 feet. So we are within that guideline, that threshold. And then some other notes that we've been in discussion with in terms of sightlines for residents that are living across the street in Prairie Ridge subdivision. The proposed solar panels will have limited view from the ground level, but they will be visible from higher levels of sight. So homeowners in Prairie Ridge that can currently see the existing berm will be able to see the solar panels. Next slide, please. So this slide, I'm going to be explaining the energy production savings that would be a part of this project and kind of explain why King County is excited about this project. The system would consist of approximately 4,000 solar panels, so that size would be 2,000 kilowatts or 2,000... 2 megawatts, excuse me, which is the largest size that would allow us to qualify for that grant funding that I talked about that's maybe going to be coming from the state. And that funding would allow us to pursue this project at no cost to the county, and the solar vendor would also be able to be compensated for the project. The system would produce just around 4 million kilowatt-hours per year, which equates to 45% of the energy usage for the Judicial Center and jail meters. And based on the proposal we received, there is an estimated first-year savings of just about $198,000 in the first year. That number is subject to change based on the funding that's available, based on what happens when we get out there to the project site, and if anything comes up, that's going to be an additional cost. So that number is up in the air, however, and subject to change, but that is what we were projected at for the first-year savings. So then, if that number were to be correct, the total savings during the 25-year life of the system would be just under $5 million. And again, that's zero cost to the county, and the solar vendor would be required to do the maintenance on the field for 25 years. Next slide, please. So here we have timeline. So we have the King County project timeline on the left and the GRNE Solar project timeline on the right. Later, Eric can talk a little bit more to the GNRE Solar project timeline in terms of what construction will look like. But the King County project timeline, so we brought this presentation to Administrative and Energy and Environment Committee in July of this year, and then we're going to be bringing the power purchase agreement to the Administrative Committee and the Energy and Environment Committee meeting in August, and then to Exec and County Board in September. So if you're interested in following along, those will be the meetings where we'll be presenting the power purchase agreement, and you can learn more about that. And then the GRNE Solar project timeline on the right-hand side, contract execution, engineering, and permitting will go through the end of this year, and then procurement will be early next year. Mobilization and installation will happen in the spring, and then ideally, closeout and testing will be happening a year from now. Next slide, please. So again, just to reiterate why the county's interested in this project or this proposed project, all costs for the project proposal are covered by potential funding that will be available at the state level should a Clean Energy Bill pass. And the solar vendor is also going to be in charge of maintenance costs and things like that for the field. And the county receives benefits of green energy and utility savings. So that concludes my general project presentation. Next slide, please. My contact information is going to be here. And Mike, I'll also put this at the end of the meeting, so you'll have this again. Please feel free to reach out to me with any questions or concerns. I will be the main point of contact for this project. And I... Yep.
So we have one question in the chat. Were we going to take all the questions in the chat after the next two speakers?
Yes. So up next, Blair, if you want to go to the next slide, we're going to have Arnie Schrammel with Progressive Energy Group present. And then after him, we're going to have Eric Peterman with GRNE Solar present. And then we will get to questions and answers, and the panelists will be able to answer questions from the public. And then after that, we will have public comment. So we will get to the questions, yes, but up next, we have some speakers.
So Ginny, thank you for your question. We'll get to you in a minute.
Are we taking away?
Yeah, thanks, Ivy. And I just wanted to start. Again, I'm Arnie Schramm. I'm with Progressive Energy Group. We're not the solar developer. That'll be Eric Peterman from Green. He'll be speaking next. What we mostly focus our expertises on is working with our customers to determine what the best value proposition is and inform them about what the different ways people can save money, apply for grants, and how these programs work. So we've worked with a couple nonprofits and governmental units in the area, and we're going to have a little video of Mooseheart. They have a 2-megawatt solar field, which is similar size to what we're proposing for King County. And I don't know if you can play that video.
8.3 acres' worth of a solar field here today of solar energy that is going to benefit our community, our campus here, and as well as our quest to helping children out in need. You know, the impact of a solar field such as this is... There's so many things that come to my mind, and, you know, one of them right away is obviously the financial piece. We're not... I mean, we're able to do what we do to help children in need, and to be able to do that, we have to raise money. And we receive that through the blessing of our fraternity, the Moos. So it's a $16 million operation. We provide everything for our kids, zero cost. And so that's a huge budget line item. So anything we can do to defray some of those costs is always a benefit. And when you defray those costs, then we're able to add more programs that directly affect the kids. This whole project began with Forefront, you know, really taking on us as an avenue for this lottery project. And so they submitted all the paperwork, did all the homework. What we had here, it was a little bit complex because we have our own powerhouse here, but we were very happy with the results. Obviously, they came back to us and said that we have been chosen. We are the largest solar field that's going to be powered and energized here in our counties around here. And this, again, we're 38 miles west of Chicago, so we're in a pretty heavily populated area. And so we're very pleased to be the first and the largest. You know, I think the impact of this project is something equivalent to taking like 450 cars off the road a year. Now, you look over that over a 25-year period, that is a lot of cars. And so again, we're just excited to be involved in a process like this and look into benefit from it.
So that was just one project. We've also some other, a couple other governmental projects we work. It's Kendall County, just south of King County. They installed a 2-megawatt field right next to their jail and Judicial Center. That's up and running, running very well. Fox Metro Sanitary District also did a 2-megawatt field. That's down in Oswego, in actual Kendall County, but most of Fox Metro's customers are actually in King County. Fox Metro Sanitary District takes in Aurora, North Aurora, Sugar Grove, Montgomery, and Oswego. So even though the plants in Kendall County, most of the customers served by Fox Metro are King County residents. And then we also did Plano Sanitary District, just another local entity. All total, progressives worked on over 25 different solar installations across Northern Illinois. And Mavis and I talked when she was at the Fox Valley Park District, which did some solar projects also. And then when Mavis came to the county board, we started talking again, and we started saying, you know, it'd be a good idea to at least look at the different county facilities and see if there's some options. And this, I think, is the option that staff has come up with as the most viable option at this time. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Eric, and Eric can talk a little bit about GRNE Solar and some specifics on the project.
Sounds great. Ivy, do you want me to jump in, or do you have any other comments?
Yeah, sure. Blair, you can skip ahead this slide and then the next one. Perfect. Yeah, Eric, go ahead.
Great. Blair, do you want me to share my screen, or do you have the slides loaded? I'm fine either way.
Eric, go ahead if you want to share your screen.
Sounds good. Let's see if we can get it to work here. Are you guys able to see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I apologize that I could not attend in person today. My travel schedule had me out of the area. So I appreciate it for being able to join on Zoom, though. Very excited to be a part of this program. Thank you, Mayor Burns, Chairwoman Bates, Ivy, and Arnie. It's great to have such a wonderful team to work with on this product. So my name is Eric Peterman. I'm with GRNE Solar. I'm with GRNE Solar. We were selected for the development of the solar field here for King County. So we've got a couple slides just to highlight some of the features of the, of the project. I'll be short with my comments and, and happy to, to talk further afterwards as well. Talk a little bit about GRNE, talk about the product and what to expect during construction. And then obviously happy to, to talk about questions afterwards. GRNE Solar is based in Illinois, in Palatine, Illinois is our headquarters. I'm born and raised in Illinois as well. We're, we're very committed to the state of Illinois and seeing renewable energy development here locally. Our target market in terms of a company is the Midwest. So we have offices in other states, Indiana, Iowa, Nebraska, to name a few. But really the Midwest is our focus for solar development. We do everything from residential products up to commercial products like this one, as well as utility scale products, working directly with utilities. And then we actually perform the operations and maintenance long-term for, for the solar assets as well. So we've, we've been able to build a team that's capable of managing all those different aspects of the solar industry. We're one of the, the longest standing solar companies in Illinois. Next year will be ten years since, since we started. And we, we started doing solar before solar was cool. And now everybody's starting to talk about it. So we're excited to be a part of the, the rapid growth of the industry. A couple of products that were noted earlier from Arnie and maybe Mavis as well. But the Kendall County Solar Farm, as well as the Fox Metro Solar Farms, were products that, that we developed and executed. So we've got some experience here locally, executing products of this size. They were both very similar in size and scope to the product with King County. So these were just executed last year simultaneously. So we ran two of these products at the same time as, as they were being developed. So this product is right in our wheelhouse to make sure that we can work through the concerns of any citizens, but also make sure that we can execute on the product as is expected by the, the stakeholders for the product as well. So these products were, were a great example of being able to work with many different parties to achieve such a wonderful product. You can see from the ribbon cutting ceremonies there and the big red switch, all of the people that were there to kick off the product as it started to produce energy. This is a zoomed in picture of the initial design for the King County project. Hopefully you can see it okay. And I'll, I'll try and walk through a couple of the details here. But you've got the parking lot to the north, which, which would be the jail parking lot. And then just to the south of that and that open field that we've been talking about is where the solar array is planned. There, there was some discussion with other parts of, of property on the campus, but it, it just was not feasible. So this was actually going to be the best spot. There is a large berm there that will need some civil work to bring it down to a, a level playing field so we can actually build the solar field on top of it. As Ivy mentioned, this is otherwise non-developable land. So it, it's a great spot for solar when you can be able to find a spot like this on your property to, to be able to house a project like this. You'll notice around the perimeter, there will be a, a fence, chain link fences is the plan. So that will keep things concise and consolidated inside the fence so that everything is secure. There'll be a safety access gate on the northeast corner so that we can get in as needed to maintain the field. So it's, so there'll be access points there. But otherwise, you know, there's an access drive that, that will be made for construction on the northeast and the west as well is the plan for now. But as was mentioned earlier, this is all still in the development phase and working through what the final engineering is going to look like in the final plans. But this is where we're starting at as of now. Ivy went over the timeline earlier when she was presenting, but here's a quick overview as well. It's going to take about a year to be able to go through all the steps to actually get this product built and, and energized. So there's a lot that has to happen in that, in that twelve month timeframe. One, we need a passage of an energy bill to be able to fund the project with energy incentives. So that's one of the key milestones that needs to be achieved. If you're looking at the timeline, you can see that these next few months will be focused on getting the contract executed and then starting the, the engineering process to get all of the final details in place. Then once the engineering is settled, we'll go through permitting. And then early next year, we'll start to do some procurement of the equipment that's needed. And then as springtime rolls around next year, hopefully everything's fallen in place to where we can actually start mobilizing to the site and actually building the system. And by August of next year, hopefully there's a beautiful solar array that's starting to produce energy and save King County some money. That is all I had for now. Ivy and Chairwoman Bates, if, if you want to take it back over, I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Thank you for your comments. So now we will go to question and answer.
So I'm going to quickly grab the questions from the audience right now. Also, just to note, if, if you are in the audience and you're interested in making a public comment after the question section, and you didn't sign up online, there is a sign up on the podium. So we'll be doing public comment after the question section. So what I'm going to do now is read the questions that were written in pers, in person attendance and then also the questions that were put in the chat. So I'll read one, the in-person, and then the chat and kind of switch off like that. Thank you. Okay. All right. So I'll start with a written question first. This is. Okay, the question is, do we have a remote access to energy production or a way to monitor power production? Eric, if you want to take that.
Sure. Yeah, all of the data that's collected from the energy field is recorded. And that, that's, that's a normal process as part of these products. I'm sure we'll be working with King County on how to present that data. I know Progressive has done a great job in the past with being able to formulate that data to a digestible website. So I'm sure with the parties that are involved here between Progressive and King County, that data will be made access, accessible to the public and you'll be able to see the production from the solar field.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, the next question I'm going to read is from the chat. Given that we plan on putting a large solar panel field on Bricker directly in front of a new single family home community, this will negatively impact those homes' property values. This plan, particularly the landscaping plan, needs to make these solar panels not visible from Prairie Ridge Homes. Mavis, do you want, Mavis or Arnie? Do we want to?
Arnie, can you?
Speak to property values? Or Eric?
Yeah, property values, that's, it's kind of a tricky question. I mean, there's been some studies that basically say there's not enough information right now to really determine if there's any impact on property values. You know, in North Carolina, where they're a little bit ahead of Illinois, really has an impact on property values. But there's a lot of other things that go into property values other than just solar. So it's, it's really a difficult question to answer. And I'm not trying to avoid the question. It's just a very hard question to answer.
The, the research that I did said that in one study, the property values went down a very small amount. In one, they went up and in some, they stayed neutral. So the idea of property values appears to be not a problem with residential property that is close to a solar field. So. And we can do more research on that, Ginny. That's for Ginny.
I was going to say, I think that that's an excellent question and that's something that we haven't thought about yet. So that would be, I will definitely do some research on that. And you can feel free to reach out to me. My contact information will be available at the end of the meeting. So I will definitely do some more research on that. Thank you for that question. Yep.
Ivy, I'd be happy to comment as well.
Go ahead, Eric.
If that's okay, yeah. We, we've been in a lot of these meetings and a lot of these discussions where questions like this come up. It's very common. A lot of people have different viewpoints on, on it. Some people love that a solar field would be going in next to their neighborhood. They love the idea of renewable energy being close to their home. They love how it looks. And some people are on the other spectrum where they, they don't like looking at solar panels. So it, that, that we've seen has really been an opinion-based aspect of it. We do have a couple of studies that we've actually used with the Kendall County project where the property values have been studied with large products like this next to a residential neighborhood. And Kendall County is the same way. It's a large field next to Judicial Center as well as the neighborhood. Conan Resnick is, is a large real estate law firm, I believe. They've done a lot of studies on this topic. They studied about forty or fifty solar fields that went in, large fields next to a neighborhood and evaluated the property values on all of those products. Some went up, some went down. But overall, over the course of those fifty products that were studied, it was actually a net increase to the property values. And I'd be happy to share that Chairman or Chairwoman Bates and with Ivy to, so you guys can just read that if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be awesome, Eric.
Right. That, that's, that's good research, Eric, that we didn't have before. Well, thank you for that.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I, I believe the net gain was about four to five percent increase over those forty or fifty products.
Four to five percent increase in property values over that research. Thank you.
So a question, Madam Chair, if I may, for the, either Mr. Peterman or the gentleman joining us. What is the distance between the first panel and the property line of the Prairie Ridge subdivision? Do we know that approximately?
Eric, I'll let you take that question. I don't think that's been finalized, but Eric, if you want to answer that question.
Yeah, I, I know what I can say offhand is from the edge of the solar panel to Bricker Road, I believe is about twenty-five feet. That would be my guess offhand. We, we can have these final measurements available from our engineering team. But then you, obviously you'd have the road that would go into that. And then the, where the property line lies on the other side of Bricker Road. So not something that I have offhand, but we can, we can get the answer to that.
Okay, I'm going to jump in there. And so we actually spoke with our development department and the setback that is required is thirty-five feet from the prop, the.
The property line, the right away line.
Thank you.
The property right away line? Okay. And just, no, that's fine. That's great. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your question.
All right, I'm going to move on to the next question. Do we currently have a contract, a power purchase agreement with a power company? So currently we are working, currently we are working with GRNE Solar to work out a power purchase agreement. But the power purchase agreement has not been brought to county board yet. So we presented this project to our administrative and energy and environment committee just as a presentation. And we will be bringing a power purchase agreement, which is the contract document to administrative committee and energy and environment committee in August. And then that will also be brought to executive and county board in September. All right. I'm going to move on to the next question that was in the chat. If successful, do we see this project leading to other community solar projects for King County? Just to make a quick clarification, a community solar project is different from what we're talking about today. So a community solar project, and I think that was kind of just a miscommunication because the names get a little tricky. A community solar project is one that is residential. So that's used for folks who live in the community and they can buy in and kind of like subscribe to a solar field. And then they basically are, they can say that they're using green energy. So this project would be King County, it would be a King County government operated power purchase agreement. So it's not residential.
Another word for this would be a behind the meter project. So all the, all the electricity would be used by King County for King County. However, I would think that if we could have, as, as we bring more of these solar fields into view of people and they start to become more aware that solar energy is available, that it would start encouraging more so, more community solar in, in our community.
And also on the note of community solar, so our King County Department of Environment and Water Resources does try to find community solar projects that our residents are eligible for. That's something that I, my position has worked on in the past. We did a solarize Chicagoland program last year that Mavis is now a part of. So whenever these opportunities are available, we will be communicating that to the public. But currently, because the, the, that clean energy bill has not been passed, there is not a lot of funding for community solar at the moment. And in particular to our residents in King County. So once that becomes available, we will communicate that to the public.
Sure.
Right. I will go to the next question. Will this project include landscaping that will properly conceal the sightlines of the solar panels from not only a ground level, but also from a second story view?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that question. From the second story view, if you can, what I tell people is if today, from your second story view, you can see the berm, you'll be seeing the solar field in the future if it's built. There isn't plans to build a wall, which would be, have to be incredibly high to block that view. The way that landscaping works, you know, there's kind of a gully and it goes way up a pretty steep bank.
Thank you, Arnie. All right, next question. How much would this project cost without a new energy bill?
I'm going to jump in on that first and then Eric, maybe you can help. Because this project is not going to cost the county any upfront funds, with or without the energy bill, our cost is still zero. But now I'd like to hear from our developer and get his take on what would happen. It may, I, I believe if there's no energy bill, it might not be possible to do the project. But Eric or, or Arnie?
Yeah, the project without the energy bill wouldn't be economic. I mean, you could still do it. The, the cost and Eric, you know, it's between four, depending on what some of the prices are. Would cost the developer, it's going to cost green four to five million dollars to build that site. But they're getting money from the county and federal government and tax credits and some money from the state of Illinois, which we call SRECs or solar renewable energy credits, which brings that cost down.
So if we don't have the SRECs, Eric, are you still here?
Yes, I am, Mavis.
Would this be viable for your, do you have a business case for this without any SRECs? I, I, the county will pay nothing, no matter what.
Yeah, Mavis, I can answer. Without the SRECs, the, the county would pay more for electricity from solar today than they would without. So if the SRECs aren't there, county could still do the project, but they would be paying more for electricity than they're paying.
Would our savings then go down?
Your savings would go from one hundred and ninety-eight thousand to probably negative fifty thousand.
Negative fifty thousand. So I, I think I better explain what an SREC is.
Yeah, that would be good.
So an SREC. So an SREC is a solar renewable energy credit. So I have solar panels on my house. I'm very excited. They're new, and I'm excited about them. So when I built my solar array on my house, the cost was seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, which I had to put up front, which was a ton of money. But in the next year or so, I will receive a check from the Illinois Power Authority for sixty-five hundred dollars. And then I'm going to get from the federal government, I'm going to get another forty-five hundred dollars tax credit. Maybe you don't need to know my whole finances, but for this, I think it's a good example. So the SRECs, the solar renewable energy credits are a payment, so I'm getting savings because of my electricity that I, you know, that comes right off of my electric bill. But I'm also being paid by the state of Illinois, and actually, it doesn't come out of, it's not a taxpayer money. It's ratepayer money from ComEd. I'm being paid a lot of money for producing renewable energy that is helping to reduce our pollution. And so ComEd collects money from every one of us every month, and that money goes into a fund, and it pays people like me. It's a thank-you check to me for producing this renewable energy. So Eric would be receiving a big check, hopefully in millions of dollars, or maybe almost a million dollars, for helping us produce green energy. So that's that, but Illinois has failed to pass a bill so far in 2021 that would renew the SRECs, the solar renewable energy credits. So nobody's getting credit for producing renewable energy. And so so without that bill, Eric is saying he can't afford to do this. And so that's the answer to the question from Ms. Shori, I think, is it would, it would cost so much instead of saving a hundred, instead of saving two hundred thousand dollars a year, we'd be out of pocket fifty thousand dollars a year more for our energy. So it doesn't work. The math is, doesn't work. But do you want to correct me at all?
Does that cost impact that first year, only for that first year? So is it a negative fifty thousand for year one, and then that negative amount decreases, if you will, over time? Or is that always a static negative fifty thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, the way our model was, we assumed that the electric prices today are constant for twenty-five years. Now, that's a very conservative estimate. You can easily say that the price of electricity should go up over the next twenty-five years. But that being said, the price of electricity has actually got down over the last twelve years. So that's why we just, the model we use, we just leave it where it is today. But I agree that that's a very conservative estimate.
So the first-year impact would be a negative two hundred fifty thousand dollars. It would swing that way. But year two, will we see a makeup?
Not much. It'd be less, but it would, it wouldn't go from two fifty to one twenty-five, down to twenty-five.
Thank you.
But, you know, this SREC money, just to add with Mavis, there's an over four hundred million dollars sitting in the fund today. So the money comes from the state of Illinois, but it's money that if you have a ComEd or Ameren bill, you're paying into that fund every month with your electric bill. And there's, again, there's over four hundred million dollars sitting in the fund. But because of the way Fiji was sunset, and the new bill hasn't come out yet, this money continues to grow. And again, that money comes from everybody who pays a ComEd bill.
I think also, while we're still talking on this subject, there was another question that asked what the status of the energy bill is and how that would impact the timing of GRNE's timeline.
Mavis, take that.
I think I can answer that. I'm a member of a CR club, and we've been watching this bill very closely. I did talk to Senator Christina Castro a few days ago, and she indicated to me that she hopes that it'll still get passed in August. But that is a hope. Otherwise, the bill has been revised a lot. CR Club and the Environmental Table had a bill called CJA, the Clean Energy Jobs Act. Now we're just calling it the Energy Bill, and we're hoping that that'll get passed. So please call your congressman, your legislator, your state rep, your state senator, and ask them to help us pass the energy bill.
All right, I'm gonna move on to the next question. Will there be battery storage? If so, what technology will that entail? And then what is the anticipated first-year cost per kilowatt hour?
Yeah, this project at the start will not have any battery storage. It was looked at, but it's not economically feasible at this time. But Green and the county are both open to watching, and if battery technology gets significantly cheaper over the next three to five years, that could be an add-on down the road.
All right, I'll move on to the next question. Can some thought be given to lowering the existing berm to level the site and use the berm soil to add meaningful landscaped berm screening along Bricker and even Peck?
Enough Jody wants to take a crack at that one.
I think a lot of that is dependent on the final design. We did some research into the original approval of the
Do you want to go stand at the?
No, I'm good. We did some research into the original committee that was formed when the jail was proposed and pulled the original plans, which we've given to green energy, and intend to utilize those as a model for where that landscaping berm is and was approved to be, and we will, as best we can, retain that area. So the main impacted berm area that will be lowered is the actual berm to the north, which was not part of that original committee's approval. It became a portion of, due to the poor soils that were found on the site when the Judicial Center was built, that larger of the two berms, which is further setback to the north, is the spoil material from the pond, as well as the Judicial Center site, and was not part of the original landscape plan. And so we'll be focusing on retaining that berm that is along Richard, and then any berming that was created with the original Judicial Center along Peck. However, that larger berm to the north is the one that we're speaking about lowering.
All right, thank you. And I'm gonna move on to the next question. Could the project plant large trees in the backyard of residents along Bricker to block the view?
I think the, when the final plans get done and it goes through the Kane County Board, that'll have to be something the Kane County Board decides what they want to do.
I think the answer is we don't know at the moment. I'm sorry, we'll have to just discuss that with the, with the board.
All right, I'm gonna move on to some more in-person questions. Will construction create a lot of dust, dirt, and noise?
Eric?
Eric, are you gonna create a lot of dust, dirt, and noise?
It will be a construction site, so there will be large machines that come in and out. There, because the berm is elevated, there will be some excavation work that will have to happen. So there'll be a lot of civil engineering and civil work to make, like we talked about earlier, make the ground flat. So you'll see some earth moving going on. In terms of noise or dust or anything like that, everything will be done, you know, during normal working hours. So you won't see anything in the evenings or early morning or anything like that. Usually, the site is contained, so we'll have either silt fence or barriers up so that everything will be contained within the construction site. It'll be secure to make sure that there's no safety concerns, but also that everything is contained as well, and there's not dust flying or debris or anything flying outside of the construction site. So the ground will be leveled, and then when the solar array is built, we'll have pile driving machines that will place the posts in the ground, and then some normal equipment like Bobcat to be able to transport material around the solar modules and the racking. So it will be a normal construction site. I wouldn't say there's anything that would be extraordinarily loud other than the pile driver. When we're putting the posts in, those tend to be loud because it's pressing the metal and vibrating the metal into the earth. So that's probably gonna be the loudest part. For this size product, that, the duration of that would probably be about a week to two weeks, two weeks at most. Otherwise, it's just gonna be normal construction activities.
And how long will the construction activities go on?
If you have the timeline in front of you, Ivy, you might know better than I, but I think probably about three months is what we would plan on a product of this size. So there'll be some prep work and site preparations, but the meat of the construction is probably gonna be about two to three months.
Okay, and this is not like building a building. It's not that intensive, correct?
No, everything's gonna be on the ground, and it's, you won't have as many trades involved. Normally with a, with a building, you'll have several different trades, plumbers and carpenters, electricians, and, you know, a lot of hosts of different folks in and out. Here, we have our mechanical construction team and the electricians. So you've really got two groups of people that will be onsite. And for the most part, it'll be pretty consistent with the, with the actual folks that will be onsite. You won't see several different groups of people coming in and out. So, yeah, it's a little bit more straightforward than, than putting a building in.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, this is Deborah Allen. Can I ask a question here?
Yes, please, Ms. Allen.
We have some neighbors who are either in the audience or zooming. May I ask if there was a lot of disruption to your lives when we built the multi-use facility just recently? Our ribbon cutting was the end of April on that, so for about a year, we built the multi-use facility. Could you just tell me what your experience was with that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Do we have any neighbors who'd like to speak about what it was like to live on Richard Road while we were building the multi-use facility?
Maybe we could finish the questions, and then during the public comment, address that item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few more questions to get to, and then we'll move on to the public comment section. Was a mailing notice sent out to all residents in the Prairie Ridge subdivision? So we did send out a mailing notice to everyone who was within three hundred feet of the property line of the Judicial Center. Our zoning, our zoning rules require that we send out a notice of anyone who is within two hundred and fifty feet. So we, we sent that out to folks who are a little bit over that requirement. So I think it was just about like twenty-five or so, twenty-five to thirty notices that we sent out in the mail. Okay, I have another question, another two questions. Are the panels and other electronics made in America? And if not, where? Eric?
Sure, yeah, this is a question that actually came up at a previous meeting on this product as well. The very large majority of the manufacturing of solar products and solar modules specifically comes from outside of the US. There are some facilities within the US that do some assembly of the components for the solar modules. The modules that we have planned for this product are actually by a company called Canadian Solar. So they are based in North America, in Canada. Some of the parts will be manufactured overseas and then come to the facility in Canada to be assembled and then shipped down to the site. There's a lot of products out there that you could buy that are, have never been assembled or even manufactured in North America. But this product specifically is from a company called Canadian Solar. So they will be working on manufacturing them in their warehouses and then bringing them down to the site here in Kane County.
Thank you, Eric. And then one other question is the service and maintenance of the equipment performed by GRNE, or is it contracted out?
That's a great question. Yeah, for this site, everything will be maintained by GRNE Solar. So we will be the product owner, and we intend to service it and own it for the life of the system, the twenty-five years, and potentially even beyond that. But we will build it, and we will function as the O and M provider as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Eric. All right, I just have a few more questions. Why is Kane County looking at a power purchase agreement versus buying a solar equipment?
Yeah, I can answer that. The primary reason is there's a, currently, there's a twenty-six percent federal income tax credit. And there's also a thing called accelerated depreciation, where a person who has a tax liability could depreciate the asset in one year. So between those two things about, the county doesn't pay income taxes, and the county has, there's no value in a depreciation, accelerated depreciation to the county. So what happens here is Eric from Green and themselves, they line up what they call tax-attribute investors who have tax liabilities and want to invest in environmental projects. And they, like Mavis said earlier, they'll get money back over the next couple of years. That'll offset some of the cost, a substantial portion of the cost of the project that the county, because the county does not pay taxes, will never get access to.
Thank you, Arnie. All right. Another question, will solar panels reflect light creating a glare?
Eric? Yeah, I can take this one. Sorry, Arnie. Yeah, the product that is made within a solar module is designed to capture light and absorb it. That's how it makes the energy. So to reflect light is actually counterproductive to the process of creating energy from solar panels. So we've done studies, we've done products near airports where we have to do glare studies as well, and also with the Kendall County product and Fox Metro as well. But the, there is not a glare that would be detrimental to anybody coming off of these specific solar panels. The idea is to absorb that light and to create the energy from it.
Awesome. Thank you, Eric. Another question that we got in the chat. As a taxpayer of Illinois and a customer of ComEd, will I not be paying the full cost of this free project through other channels?
Yeah, everybody who's currently has a ComEd bill today is paying into this fund, the renewable energy charge, if you look in your ComEd bill. So all that money goes in, and then some of the money comes out. Some of it'll go to Mavis for her solar on her house, some went to solar in my house. But yeah, everybody who's got a ComEd bill is paying in, and that's where the money comes out for projects like this. I don't know if I answered the question, but that's how the mechanics work.
And that money has been collected for many years, ten, twenty years?
Since, the way it's collected now is since Fiji started in 2017, but it actually goes back ten years prior to that. But the current mechanism was put in in 2017.
Right, so you're already paying for it, whether we get the benefit of that fund or not. So Kane County stands to benefit five million dollars from that fund. If, and as a, this is not a tax, it's a ratepayer fee. It's a line on your electric bill. It's a line on your electric bill that you can go and look at and it says renewable energy, something like that.
Renewable energy portfolio cost.
Pardon me?
It's, it's labeled as renewable energy portfolio cost on your ComEd bill.
Arnie's got the right word for it, thank you, Arnie. Do you have any more questions, Ivy?
I'm actually just going to read two more questions that were sent in prior to the meeting, and then we'll move on to the public comment section. Will the panels be visible from the ground level or higher levels of site? And I did also kind of cover this in my presentation. The panels will have limited view from the ground level, but they will be visible from higher levels of sight. And then another question, just to reiterate, some homes in the Prairie Ridge subdivision are overlooking this property, are built on a high elevation. Will homeowners view, looking out their windows, be solar panels? So again, if you can see the existing berm on the north side, that hill will, you will, you will be able to see the solar panels in the future. I, I just wanted to cover those two last questions. So now we will move on, if there are no more in the chat, which I don't think that there are.
May I make a comment, Ivy? One of the plans for the, the solar panels, underneath the solar panels, will be that there will be natural plantings that will attract pollinators, monarch butterflies. This underneath the, the panels will, will be used as a natural area as well.
And also, I do want to say, if anybody has any further questions after the presentation, please feel free to reach out to me. You'll see my contact information again at the end of the meeting. All right, we can move on to a public comment. So I do have two members signed up who are here in person. And then if there's anybody online who would like to make a public comment, please let me know. But first, I'm going to call up our folks who are here in person. Chris Burkett, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Chris, if you could, so the whole public comment will be 30 minutes long. We're going to request three minutes.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions, but I just basically wanted, I came here to, to see if there was going to be any educational programs because, you know, renewable resources is our future, same with our kids. We need to treat both of them importantly. You know, it's the very basic necessities of life, even through the pandemic. Our nurses rightfully were, were praised for doing their jobs, but without electricians, their ventilators wouldn't work. So much of their equipment, elevators, anybody in a wheelchair would have been stuck on the first floor without electricians. And there's currently a lack of electricians in the trades. And I came here under the assumption that like Kane County was going to operate the fields. I was going to ask for some kind of a program to where we could teach kids about the future. Found out that wasn't the case, so I guess my question would be for Eric, if he would be willing to set up a program to teach kids.
I think also, Eric, before you jump in, Chris, you can reach out to me directly. So I, my position is Kane County Resource Management Coordinator. So I do a lot of public outreach with the community. And we are trying this year to be more involved with the school district and getting out to, to kids in particular. So that's definitely something that I can help you with directly. And Eric, if you want to jump in on anything?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to, Ivy and Chris, thanks, thanks for the questions. We, we at GRNE Solar are very focused on education. Last year, we actually hosted over 25 separate events for education specifically in libraries or in community centers. And our, our team is very focused on making sure that we help contribute to the communities that we live and work in as well. We've done some job training stuff onsite. It's something that we could maybe discuss with Kane County to see if that would be applicable for this product. But yeah, Chris, if you want to reach out to our team, we'd be happy to get in touch and see what we can do to, to help each other out on this. But education is a soul, is, is one of the main primary focuses of, of our company.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you for that interesting question.
Thank you. All right, and next, I'm going to read a public comment that was sent in by Sher, Sher, Sherlyn Cameron, correct? I hope I said that right. All right, so I'm going to read this public comment. Dear Kane County Board members, please note that the proposed solar panel project will become a devastating view from our house located in the Prairie Ridge subdivision. I have attached a picture with the current view looking from the inside out of our main living space. So we're going to pull up this picture right now. All right, here we go, we have a picture. We look directly at the berm right now, and if this project is approved as is, we will be staring directly into solar panels. Homes built along Bricker Road are on an elevation. Therefore, landscaping at ground level alone will not obstruct the view of the solar panels from our main living areas. As I mentioned previously, this feels devastating to me. Please consider what impact this is going to have for the homeowners that live on Bricker Road. I was not aware that the county property at the location was even zoned for solar energy. I am asking that this project be engineered in a way that does not leave established homeowners looking out their windows staring at hundreds of solar panels that were not present when our homes were built. If that cannot be accomplished, perhaps this is not the right site to put a solar farm. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. And thank you for the picture too.
Yes, thank you for the picture. And then we're going to have one more public comment, Paul Cameron.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd just like to voice my dissatisfaction with this proposed project, and particularly from the aesthetics impact that it will have on, by your own count, 25 to 30 homes along Bresher and the Prairie Ridge subdivision and Fisher Farm subdivision. You speak about how, what, if we can see the berm today, that we will be able to see these solar panels and that there wouldn't be very much visible from the road. Well, the reality of the situation is you can see that berm from the road. The sight line that you saw in the picture that my wife sent is from the first floor of our home. Because of the elevation to our homes, we walk in at street level, but by the time you get to the back of our homes, we're at the second level. But, so certainly from that level and for all the homes on that street, this would be the view from that height. But from ground level as well, that berm is very visible. That, and taking 15 to 20 feet off, that isn't going to help matters really much if you're going to put solar panels on top of it. I just think that this is really, doesn't make for a good neighbor. And I think there's probably better opportunities to, I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, this project just won't move forward. But at a minimum, I would hope that more thought be given to the landscaping plan of this. You seem to cling to the original landscaping plan that was designed for the Kane County property long before that this was ever a piece of, of any kind of potential opportunity. And to keep that berm and to keep the landscaping intact, just because that's what was originally passed when the jail and the courthouse were built, doesn't make sense to me. It seems like a better way to resolve this would be to remove the berm, as has been suggested by many of the people that have called and put in comments tonight, and, and/or move the berm to become a physical barrier between all of us and where the panels would be if they could be located at ground level. To put the thought that, I mean, it's bad enough that they're going to be visible on the ground, let alone on top of a berm. I mean, that's just, this doesn't make sense. I think, you know, Bresher Road is becoming a more and more significant gateway to our city because of the commons and all the other shopping available at Lowe's and Myers. And I just don't know what kind of message we're trying to send to communities by having this be the view as you come into our city. You know, my wife and I are, are long lifetime members of, residents of this community. We grew up here. We've seen a lot of changes, not all good. And I think this is an opportunity to catch something before it gets too far along that really is not going to be a good solution for us. One other point I want to make about just the whole landscaping and design, it's bad enough that I think we're going to have to be looking at panels, but then a chain link fence going around the property, I mean, that's not very attractive. The property line comes up fairly close to Bresher Road, I'm sure, on the north side of the street. So, I mean, we're just going to be looking at a, a chain link fence as kind of the first thing you see when you look that way. So I, I just think it's not attractive at all. While I'm believing the green concept and appreciate the efforts you're trying to make in that direction, I just don't think this is the right solution, or at least landscaped, the way you're intending to do it for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much for your feedback today. And if anyone in the audience does want to speak to the question that Board Member Deborah Allen, this got brought up earlier as far as what the, the construction was like during the multi-use building. There was a note put into the chat that I can read now that responds to that question. The multi-use facility provided relatively normal construction activity, but since opening, it has been noticed that it is very bright at night with virtually every exterior light left on at full brightness all night. Some thought could be given to lowering that brightness and even the number of lights left on for security.
So. Thank you for that information.
Yes, thank you for the feedback. And if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to that question, please feel free to step up to the podium.
I guess I can speak to that as well. The main access for most of the construction vehicles for that project was off of Bresher Road. And I think while they made efforts to try to keep things clean, it really wasn't done very well. There was a lot of traffic going in and out of there, and it just was loud and noisy and dirty. So you want some feedback, that's, that's it.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for those comments. If there is no other responses to the questions and no other participants who are interested in making a public comment, I will move on to the conclusion of the meeting. Just a quick wrap-up. The, a summary of the feedback that we heard from everyone today and that was put in the chat online will be presented at the Administrative Energy and Environment Committee meetings as well as the Executive and County Board. So the board members will hear your feedback today. In addition to the, the project, the purchase power agreement that we're going to be presenting at those meetings in August and September. And if anyone has any further questions, Blair, if you want to put up the last slide of the, the presentation, my contact info is on there. Just so everyone can have it, the, yep, right there, perfect. If there are any questions, concerns, please feel free to reach out to me. I would be happy to, to talk more about this project with you. And I also want to thank all the, I want to thank everyone who joined us today. Thank you to everyone who shared feedback, both in person and online. And thank you to all of our speakers and staff for volunteering for this meeting. Mavis, do you have any final remarks?
I, I would like to say, thank you again for coming, thank you for your comments. We want to be good neighbors to everybody and we'll take all of your comments into consideration. And we'll get back to you with our, our, our next steps. Thank you so much for being here. Good night, thank you, Mayor Burns.